This is to advise that notice time, date, location, extent known agenda of public meeting was prominently posted in public place reserved for such similar announcements on June 30th, 2022, and transmitted to the Times of Princeton Packet and West Windsor Plainsboro News on June 30th, 2022, and filed with the Township Clerk on June 30th, 2022. Before you call the roll, I think Jerry has something to do.
I'm going to swear in Curtis, who was being channeled from class two to class four. So Curtis, if you have a copy of the other document, if you can read that.
I, Curtis Hoberman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of the office of member class four on the planning board according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
So, if you did some of that and then on the other one.
Cindy, please call the roll.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Schicktail?
Here.
Mr. Pankov?
Mr. Hoberman?
Here.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Here.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Here.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Karp?
Here. Thank you. First order of business is reorganization, election of chair. Do you hear a motion or nomination?
I'd like to nominate Michael Karp to serve as Chair of the Planning Board of West Windsor Township for the balance of year 2022. I'd like to second that.
Cindy, please call the roll. Vote.
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Schicktail?
Yes.
Mr. Hoberman?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Chairman Karp?
Yeah. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to have a motion for nomination of Vice Chair.
I would like to nominate Curtis Hoberman for the position of Vice Chair of the West Windsor Planning Board.
Second. Okay. Andrea, motion, second by Annis. Can you please call a vote, please?
Mr. Lovero?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Schicktail?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Morata?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Coberman?
Yes.
Chairman Karp?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
Honored to serve. Thank you very much.
Nice to have you.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, the next order of business is application PB 19-13 amended senior living at Bear Creek. This is amended final site plan.
Did I read? Jerry, do you want to go over or do you want me to read? I can do that.
Okay. And then I will. Well, I'll advise. Let me advise the board first. The proof of publication and service order. Notice was proper and the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, in this application PB 19-13 amended, the applicant is now seeking an amended final major site plan approval to construct the condominium unit IL. One three-story apartment building containing a total of 220 units consisting of 81 one-bedroom market rate units, 51 one-bedroom affordable units, and 88 two-bedroom market rate units and indoor amenity areas of approximately 15,000 square feet, including an automated cafe for breakfast and lunch, which will also be available to residents of the assisted living facility, and the hamlet, an exercise room, a yoga room, a wellness room, card rooms, craft rooms, together with outdoor amenities, included a heated pool, one tennis court, three pickleball courts, as well as an outdoor seating area, parking areas, two charging stations for electric cars, and related site improvements. Amended final major site plan approval for relocate, reconfigure walkways, loading areas, and trash enclosures on the AL and IL units, and reconfirming variances and design waivers previously granted. Jerry's already allotted to that it's under jurisdiction. Okay. Council, how many witnesses do you have for tonight?
A potential of five.
Can we have them all stand up and swear at the same time? This way it saves a little time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If you could all raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony about the given be the truth? So sworn or affirmed. If we can go around, starting with Anthony, and just state your full name and then spell your last name.
Frank, I'm sorry, C R H. Frank, R H.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's call your first witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Frank Petrino. I'm with the law firm of Benjamin Siemens. We represent the applicant and site. Mr. Muller is also, has already confirmed, or has jurisdiction. I know you read something into the record. Mine is a little longer, a little more complete, so I'll forward mine as well.
Sure.
So, the property we're talking about is approximately 28 acres in size. It's part of the planned residential retirement zoning district, or I should say it's located in. It's irregular in shape. It has frontage on Old Trenton Road and on Village Road East. It's designated on the tax map of the township at block 33, lot 102, and has a street address of 289 Village Road. The entrance to the premises is located off of Village Road, and there is a road called Esplanade Drive, which is an internal loop road. The lot is comprised of two condominium units. The applicant for this one is the owner of condominium unit IL. The owner of condominium unit AL. AL is assisted living. IL is independent living. The owner of the AL unit has consented to the filing and processing this application. In February of 2020, the planning board granted preliminary final site plan approval for a 220-unit development consisting of four nine one-bedroom market rate units, 51 one-bedroom affordable units, and 40 one-bedroom with den units, and 82 bedroom market rate units, some with dens. Also, indoor amenity areas of approximately 10,000 square feet, and as part of that was a cafe, an exercise room, yoga room, wellness room, card room, including a heated pool, as you mentioned, four pickleball courts, and two tennis courts, and outdoor seating areas. The site plans that were approved in 2020 were reviewed for compliance, resolution compliance late last year, early this year. The resolution compliance plans satisfied all the conditions of the prior approval, except for two minor engineering issues, which I'm sure Fran will raise. The resolution compliance plans revised some of the indoor amenities and exterior landscaping. The exterior amenities reduced tenants' courts from two to one, pickleball courts from four to three, added a bocce court, added a off-leash pet area. We also adjusted the condominium lot, or proposing to adjust the condominium lot line, so that a dumpster area that was shown or is now to be shown on the independent living area, independent living unit will in fact be shown on that condominium. Tonight, we're seeking amended final major subdivision approval to construct on the unit IL, again, independent living unit. One three-story building containing a total of 220 units, consisting of 81 one-bedroom market rate units, 51 one-bedroom affordable units, and 82 two-bedroom market rate units, all units now without dens, and indoor amenity area of approximately 15,000 square feet, or larger area, including but not limited to a cafe for breakfast and lunch, which will also be available to residents of the assisted living facility and the hamlet, and dinner for residents of only the independent living unit. There'll also be an exercise room with equipment, a yoga room, a wellness room, card rooms, craft rooms, together with outdoor amenities, including again, a heated pool, one tennis court, three pickleball courts, as well as an outdoor seating area. We also will have parking for 246 cars on the assisted living unit site. There will be, I'm sorry, independent living site, two charging stations for electric cars, stormwater management facilities, related site improvements, including landscaping, lighting, and sign. We're also going to show you tonight, and I don't know technically it's an approval or not, but we're going to show you the revised condominium lot lines, and you'll see what is located on the independent living unit, what's located on the assisted living unit. In previous applications, we were previously here in, we get the years right, in 1999, we were here in 2005, and we were here in 2020. During those hearings, certain, a variance was granted and certain design waivers were granted. I'll tell you what they are. We're still utilizing those variances and waivers, although with regards to the variance, the setback that was approved from internal roads was a setback of 24.58 feet. Under the new plan, we are closer to the required setback of 50 feet. We're now at 33.8. We also had design waivers or RSIS, residential site improvement standard, minimums, exceptions were previously granted. There were, I think, six, and I'll just list them quickly. One loading dock for the proposed independent living build, whereas four loading docks are required. That waiver was granted. We're continuing to utilize that waiver. Access car parking, total eight, 339 spaces on both units, including 12 spaces for the cafe, as remember, the hamlet and the assisted living folks can utilize the cafe for breakfast and lunch during those times, whereas a maximum of 235 are required under your ordinance. That's a waiver. We continue to utilize. Internal driveways and entrances are 24 feet wide without bicycle lanes, whereas a 30-foot wide driveway and 8-foot wide bicycle lane are required. Again, we're continuing to utilize that waiver. Lighting that is not for security purposes to remain on after 11:00 PM, whereas all lighting that is not for security purposes under your standards is to be shut off. Again, continuing to utilize that waiver. We're proposing two ground signs at 11 square feet, whereas one sign at 16 square feet is permitted. Again, we're continuing to utilize that waiver. And lastly, sidewalks on one side of the internal streets, whereas sidewalks on both sides is required. We're still utilizing that waiver. We asked in our notice, and you're familiar with what Jerry and the other words would call the catch-all phrase. We said we're asking for any and all variances, waivers that might be picked up by your staff in order to build the project as we described it. No additional variances or waivers were defined by the staff. We have, since the last TRC meeting, when we were sent to the planning board, we have received four memorandum, review memorandum from your staff. They are from Andover Milsky, dated June 23, and you'll hear more about that as the witnesses go through their testimony. We have one from David Novak, dated June 27, 2022. If I said 23 before, I was wrong. We have a review memorandum from Fran Guzic, dated July 29, 2020.
June, June.
That obviously is wrong.
June, June 29.
June 29, 2022. And we have a review memo from Chief Kennedy Lynch, dated July 8, 2022.
Frank, let me interrupt you for a second. For Fran's memo, is it dated July 29?
I don't think it is. I know it's. I think.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
I can, let me have to check.
Me too. Okay.
Dated June 23. Lynch is July 8.
Did Lynch's?
Fran's is June 29.
Sorry to interrupt you. Did Lynch's memo, is that what you sent the email? Because it's not in the package.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. It came in late.
Yeah, okay. Just making sure. Thank you.
Want me to read it?
If you don't mind, that would be great.
Sure. It's dated July 8. It's to the board from Chief Lynch regarding PB 19-13 senior living at Bear Creek overview. We have reviewed the above noted application, a three-story senior living building with 220,000 units, and I think, I'm not sure if this totals right, for a total of 323,451 square feet. I think it's less than that now, and we'll talk about that. I think you took that from a prior memo. Access emergency vehicle access appears adequate. Next pedal order supply for fire protection. Applicant should designate proposed location of the fire department connection and ensure that a hydrant is located within 100 feet of the proposed connection in compliance with NFPA 14, and we will do that miscellaneous. Applicant has agreed to place lock boxes for immediate access by the fire department on both at the front of the building and rear service entrance. And I don't know if that's reflected on our plan yet or not, but a little bit. Applicant has agreed with the installation of the fire department standpipes in each stair tower. The standpipes shall have two and a half inch national standard thread hose outlets on each stair tower door. Landing standpipes should guide into the fire straight for piping, so that there will be only one fire department connection. And then this last comment, under miscellaneous, applicant should be aware that under NJAC 570 comma 510.1, emergency responder radio coverage, quote, "All new buildings shall have approved radio coverage for emergency responders within the building based upon existing coverage levels of the public safety communication systems of the jurisdiction at the exterior of the building." End of quotes, then note under that the applicant will be required by the construction official to conduct a radio signal strength survey of the building while under construction, and if deemed necessary, a radio signal amplification system would need to be installed. Conclusion. It's a one-page document. Conclusion, the applicant has expressed all concerns raised by this office and agreed to all requests made. We recommend approval.
Okay. Just a quick question. Jerry, you have that memo?
Yes.
Okay. And so you agreed to all the conditions?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
So, you mentioned, and you swore as five potential witnesses.
Yep.
Our first witness is, our first witness, Daphne Galvin. She will provide testimony regarding 2020 site plan that was approved and the non-architectural changes to that plan as part of the 2000, or she needs the microphone. And the changes to the 2020 approved site plan. We have a, we have, our first exhibit is an overlay, so it's very easy to see what the changes are. Our second witness would be Jack Farman. He's our project landscape architect. I don't know if I mentioned, Daphne did testify in 2020, so she was accepted as an expert at that time. Jack Farman, who's our project landscape architect, he'll provide testimony regarding the enhanced landscaping plan for unit IL independent living. I don't know if Jack testified in 2020. No. So, we'll have to go through his credentials. Steve Cohen, I believe, was here in 2020. He's our project architect, well-known to the board. He'll provide testimony regarding certain components of the architectural plans that were reviewed and effectively approved by the board in 2020, and he'll go through that plan and the changes between that plan and current plans. Anthony Mizuka, the applicant's representative, is here. Craig Roncamp, the applicant's planner and affordable housing consultant, is also here, and they're both available to answer questions if the board has any questions regarding planning or anything for Mr. Mizuka. Our first witness again is Daphne Flavon.
And Frank? I would graciously.
I'll get it.
Frank?
Yes, sir.
I would graciously like to ask that as your team presents tonight, not only let us know the what of the changes, but the why, the reasoning, why these changes are being made. Thank you.
We'll certainly attempt to accommodate that. Daphne, I'm not going to mess up your last name again, so you've been sworn. Can I ask you a couple questions?
Sure.
By whom were you employed in what capacity?
Can you take the mic from John?
Right over here. Yeah.
Partner.
By whom were you employed in what capacity?
Partner Engineering and Science, and I'm the Director of Land Development.
Okay. What's your educational? Mr. Chairman, do we have to go through the qualifications? Do you have anything that you qualify?
Yeah, but this is a separate hearing. This is a separate hearing, so you'll have to go through them.
Please state your educational background. What licenses you hold specifically in the state of New Jersey and is that licensed?
Sure. I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Lafayette College. I also have a graduate certificate in project management from NJIT. I obtained my professional engineering license in New Jersey in 1989, so have over 35 years of experience in all aspects of site design, from due diligence and feasibility through design and construction on residential, commercial, and industrial projects for both public and private clients. I've been accepted as an expert witness and provided testimony throughout New Jersey within that timeframe, including in West Windsor on this application.
And your license is current?
My license is current.
Okay. And anybody have a license? Qualifications accepted.
Now, did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the amended final site plan stated back there in 2019, last revised June 14, 2022, consisting of 18 sheets?
Yes.
And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the stormwater management report dated July 10, 2019, last revised June 14, 2022?
Yes.
And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the site plan checklist with the three-page driver?
Yes.
Okay. We've gone through your qualifications, so first let's take you through your testimony outline. I'm not going to ask, we're not going to do a Q and A. I just want you to go through a vote quicker, and then just give us time, Mr. Muller and I, time to mark exhibits.
Okay. So, I'm going to start with an amendment exhibit that we prepared for the hearing. Would this be A1?
Yeah, and if you can mark that.
Could you let us know what drawing that's based off, in our drawing pack?
Yes. So, Exhibit A1 is entitled "An Amendment Exhibit." It's dated today, which is July 13, 2022. The exhibit is based upon the previously approved site plan, so that goes back to the 2020 approval. And so what we've done is we've superimposed and read the changes that are proposed from that previous approval. The first, it's sheet number three of 17 from the previous approval. It was dated May 3 of 2019.
I'm sorry, did you say sheet number 17?
Three of 17.
Three, yeah. Oh, three. Okay.
We have 18 sheets, so do we currently have this sheet before the red marking? That's what we're asking.
That's correct. In the revisions to the plans, a sheet was added to the set of plans. The intent of this exhibit is to explain the changes that have occurred since the time of the previous approval. So, the plans had been revised after sheet number three had been prepared.
Now, I have 11 by 17 prints of this, whether that would be.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Thank you. Anthony, could I get a copy for the public record, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Sweet.
Ready? Okay. So, the first thing I want to do is get everybody orientated to the site. Up in the upper right-hand corner, we have a north arrow that indicates that north is up and generally to the right. Old Trenton Road is shown in that corner of the exhibit, and then Village Road East runs along the right side of the exhibit. So, the site is known as block 33, lot 1.02. It contains 27.84 acres in two condominium areas, as previously described by Mr. Petrino. It's located in the PRRC zone, which is the Planned Residential Retirement Community Zone.
Everybody have a copy?
Yeah.
Anthony, could I get a copy for the public record, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Sweet.
Ready? Okay, so the first thing I want to do is get everybody orientated to the site. Up in the upper right-hand corner, we have a north arrow that indicates that north is up and generally to the right. Old Trenton Road is shown in that corner of the, the exhibit, and then Village Road East runs along the right side of the exhibit. So the site is known as Block 33 Lot 1.02. It contains 27.84 acres in two condominium areas, as previously described by Mr. Petrino. It's located in the PRRC zone, which is the Planned Residential Retirement Community Zone. The site is located at the intersection of Old Trenton Road and Village Road East. It's bordered to the east, should be down at the bottom of the sheet, by the hamlet at Bear Creek. To the south, by preserved farmland, that was actually dedicated from the original Bear Creek parcel. To the west, by Old Trenton Road and a residential subdivision. And to the north, by the villages at Bear Creek on the opposite side of Village Road East. The middle school is located diagonally across the intersection of Old Trenton Road and Village Road East. The site is partially developed with the Bear Creek Assisted Living Facility, which fronts on, or faces Old Trenton Road, and includes a driveway loop around the site, parking areas, landscape buffers, and stormwater management pond adjacent to Old Trenton Road, and other site improvements. The site is accessed from Village Road East, over in this location here, across from the driveway to the daycare center with the, and then comes into the site with the internal loop road. And there's also direct access to the hamlet and driveway along the easterly side of the property. Now I'm going to describe in red the changes that have occurred from the previous approval to what we're requesting for the amended approval tonight. Most of the changes are associated with the building, which will be discussed by the project architect, but I'll go through the site-related changes now. What we've done on the plan is we've highlighted in red the new building footprint, so you can see that the new building footprint is smaller than the previously approved footprint. We've added sidewalks in various locations to provide connection between the access doors and the main sidewalk that loops around the site and into the parking areas. We've widened the emergency access drive that runs across the back of the facility that was previously proposed and approved at 10 feet wide, but Chief Lynch requested that we widen it to 20 feet, so we've shown that on the plan. We've added a proposed easement that will be dedicated to public service electric and gas. That easement will start up in the corner here on Old Trenton Road, run down generally parallel to the southerly property line, and then come across the site. And that, the intent of that easement is to accommodate both existing and proposed electric services and transformers.
Excuse me, your plan shows that a JCPNL, not public service.
Oh. It should be Public Service, my mistake, PSC. Oh, JCPNL, I'm sorry. So the plan is correct, and I said the right, gave the wrong company, JCPNL. We've also eliminated one of the underground stormwater recharge areas that had been in the rear parking lot and would now conflict with the JCPNL easement. So we've eliminated that recharge area, and we've distributed that stormwater runoff from the roofs into the other four proposed areas, which are also dashed in red. Those each got larger to accommodate the elimination of the fifth recharge system. We also made some modifications to some of the utility services that connect to the building. Next, I want to talk about the condo line revision, which Mr. Petrino had referenced.
Can we just feel a little?
Sure.
The, the reduction in the size of the building. Do you have the numbers available, how the size of the building?
I think that's easier for, that's easier for Steve to handle.
Okay, and then with regard to stormwater? Is less of the site now impervious?
Sure. The, the plan when it was originally approved was approved for 11.6 acres of impervious surface. There's been various revisions over the years, and we're currently proposing 11.56 acres of impervious, so it's slightly below what the original approval was for.
So the stormwater management system was sized properly for, for the uses that we're proposing on this lot?
That's correct.
Okay. And, well, I guess the others maybe relate more to Mr. Cohen, so I'll stop talking and you can go to the next.
Okay.
The recharge place that you, that you removed, and you said you improved the sizes of other, other recharge areas.
Yes.
Are we coming out with the same number of cubic feet of recharge over X amount of time that we would? Or is it more, is it less?
Yeah.
What's, what's?
There's a, there's a detailed analysis that we, that we perform based upon the amount of impervious surface on the site. And the way we handle the recharge demand is we take the clean runoff from the roof areas, and we discharge them underground so that the clean water infiltrates into the subsurface. So the calculations, which have been reviewed by Mr. Gussick, accommodate the required recharge based on the current site configuration.
So previously, were you taking water that wasn't from the roof?
Yeah, correct. So, so the, the roof area has been slightly reduced, but there's been other changes on the site such that there's a slight increase in impervious from the previous iteration. But we still handle the recharge design by taking the roof runoff, the clean roof runoff, and discharging that underground.
Well, at the, at the end, is the bottom line number, the same amount of recharge being handled as before?
It's probably a slight increase in recharge being handled than what was previously approved.
And you're using?
As required by the state stormwater management standards.
Okay, and you've changed to a flat roof now?
Yes, and actually that allowed us the flexibility to, that was part of the reason we were able to eliminate that recharge area in the back, because we had more control over where the roof could drain when we had a flat roof as opposed to a peak roof. Okay, go on. Okay, so.
What exhibit is this?
This is going to be A2.
Daphne, what would you call this exhibit?
This is the condo line exhibit. It's dated July 12, 2022. Okay, so as Mr. Petrino had, had mentioned before in his description, there's going to be some minor adjustments to the condo line to better separate the AL and the IL uses. What we've got shown in blue here, we've got a blue line around the entire parcel, and then also in blue, we show the line that currently divides the assisted living facility in this area up here near Old Trenton Road and the proposed independent living facility down in this area. So there are three locations where we want to make an adjustment. The first location over in the, kind of at the, near the southerly property line, is where we had previously proposed a new trash enclosure and loading area for the IL building, but it fell into the AL condo area. So we're going to modify the line to wrap it around that area so that it stays on the, the IL condo lot. The second location, which is along the northerly side of the property, parallel to Village Road East, is a location where the proposed tennis court also slightly encroached into the AL condo area. We want to modify that by slotting the line over so that we keep the entire tennis court with the IL condo, which is what it's intended to service. The last area where we want to make a modification is in this area right here, not too far from the intersection of Old Trenton Road and Village Road East, where there's an existing parking lot that services the AL condo, and part of that parking lot fell on the IL condo unit. So we want to modify the line in that area so that it falls on the AL condo, which is, which is what it's intended to serve. There's been, there'll be a slight modification then in the areas associated with each of the condo units. The IL condo area will be increased slightly to 14.2 acres, and the AL condo area will be reduced slightly to 13.6 acres, bringing us back to the total of 27.8 acres.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The little, the little, was that garbage collection, the little, does it meet the setback requirements for the, the assisted living condo? Is there any setback requirement?
You mean relative to the condo line?
Yeah, the line.
I'm not aware of any setback requirement relative to the condo line. It's not a lot line, it's a different type of line.
Remember, this is created by the recording of a master deed, not a, not a subdivision line.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you.
Questions? Okay, then go back to the A1. Okay, so I'm back to Exhibit A1, which is the amendment exhibit. I want to talk about the fact that the bulk standards for the zone, the PRRC zone, are all met with respect to the proposed amendments to the plan. That's ordinance section 200-194.C1. And in addition, the site layout meets all of the area height and yard requirements of ordinance section 200-194.C2G, with one exception, which Mr. Petrino had mentioned. There was a variance previously granted for the minimum front yard setback from an internal road, where the requirement was 50 feet, and the previously approved dimension was 24.58 feet. That location occurs down at this, in this area right here, adjacent to the internal loop road, and we have increased that dimension to 33.8 feet. So we have reduced the deficiency or the violation of the 50-foot requirement. And then I want to summarize a couple of other things that actually haven't changed. The proposed parking for the entire site still proposes a total of 339 spaces, and we're still proposing one additional loading space to accommodate the independent living building. The signage remains as was previously proposed. There's one existing sign at the main entrance here off of Village Road East, that's 11 square feet, and we still have a proposed sign along Old Trenton Road that's also proposed at 11 square feet. With respect to stormwater management, I previously mentioned that the underground recharge system area number five has been removed, and that those, that recharge function has been distributed to the other four systems, and they've been enlarged to accommodate that additional flow. With respect to?
The, yeah, you have the four systems on here in your stormwater report, but there isn't anything showing what it was before. The stormwater report that we got, there is a, a calculation, you've got the four systems that you've got in here now, I'm just.
Correct.
Still a little struggling, because I don't see the comparison of what those numbers were with five, and there's, and there's a lot of referenced reports here that, that we, that we don't have copies of. So I'm just curious what the, what the square foot, for instance, or the recharge from before was compared to now.
There's an earlier version of the report.
Just give me a second.
Sure.
This has all been reviewed by Frank, and he's in.
All right, then, then I'll, then I'll just ask John to, to give a summary or something when, when John talks later, thanks.
All right, the only other item I wanted to mention was regarding outside agency approvals. We will be resubmitting to the Mercer County Planning Board and also to the Mercer County Saw Conservation District for revised certification, and we recently obtained a one-year extension on our Treatment Works approval. This is for sewer, from the township Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority and NJDEP.
The parking lot's going to have two charging stations?
Yes, there's two charges, yes.
Can I ask how you came up with two, or?
That was what was, the previous approval was based on two spaces.
And since then, there's been a law with 5% parking, excuse me, 5% charging stations and 10% make-ready. I know you put in your original application before the law, I don't know if that was just a preliminary, but have you rethought whether or not two charging stations would be enough now that we're in 2022? And?
Yeah, I'll defer that to Mr. Petrino.
We, we indicated at TRC that as, as the need arises in the future, we'll provide more charging stations. The, the legislation in the Model Act don't apply to us because we've had preliminary approval, and the only, the act only applies if you haven't previously received.
Right, and, and I understand, I understand that.
I'm sorry, I can't.
I say, I understand that you're not under that act, but looking at today's adoption of electric cars, and also, are you adding any make-ready for, for additional electric cars? I mean, you haven't put in your parking lot yet, so this would be the time to do it. So have you considered adding some additional make-ready for, so when those needs do occur, you don't have to rip up your parking lot?
We don't think it'll work that way, but as the need, as we see a need for more, we indicated at TRC, and we'll indicate again tonight that we will provide more charging stations. As the need arises.
There is room in the, in the parking lot there to add more as needs.
But why don't you add right now? Why don't you add right now? Yeah.
It's, it's very expensive to just add them without knowing that there's demand.
But demand is going to go in, up and up. Demand is going to go up and up for electric vehicles, okay?
And when the demand is here, we, we want to satisfy the tenants, obviously, we will provide.
Be more expensive at that time. We have to dig the ground and put in cables or whatever, okay? So right now, if you put the facility right on, much cheaper for you guys.
Yeah, but if you put the make-ready, you're not going to have to dig up your, your pavement. And then when, you know, you don't have to put the, the charging EBS hours right now, but you could at least run some wires and be ready for it.
Make-ready is conduit?
Pretty much.
It is, it is the conduit plate. You don't commit to, but it's a bottom path, but we will put conduit in now, so that we can pull the lines later. We will know where we can put them on this. We then do conduit throughout the parking area, so we can get as many parking, as many charging stations as needed.
So is that part of the plan right now, or is that, is that something you're agreeing to, or?
Well, you can, we can provide that as part of resolution compliance. We can provide a plan that indicates where the conduit would, would be installed, and I think that satisfies your concern.
Right, I, I mean, I understand you feel people are moving in, they don't have a need, you don't know, you don't know even necessarily how many amps you're going to have to supply. But if you are putting in enough make-ready so that you'd be able to add more easily, then I, I think that would probably satisfy some of what we need.
We don't want to dig up parking lots, we don't want the extra expense, so we will plan, we'll give you a plan that'll show where conduit can, will be installed, so that when, if and when additional stations are needed, the conduit will be there, the location will be available for installation of additional stations.
So Frank, that would be subject to the review of our staff?
Of course, yeah, well, as I said, Alan, during resolution compliance.
Can you tell us how many, how many conduits you're going to install for the, for the charging stations? How many, how many conduits will we start installing at the locations? How many?
Well, you'll see it on the, on the plan.
But can you tell us now? I know, I know, it's a pipe, okay? What I'm saying, how many locations you are to install those conduits?
How many spots are we going, are we actually going to reach?
You're, Rose, if you're going to put between parking spaces, that perfectly put on that, on the grass area between that, there are only three conduits on each side that are needed. So if I say that we, we'll have six conduits, that, that satisfy?
Well, we're going to work with staff, but we don't have an obligation to do it. We're going to put, we're going to go above and beyond, we're going to put the conduit in, it makes sense for us to do that, and we'll show you where the conduit is going, and you'll be able to determine how many additional spaces could be provided. I don't think we should belabor this anymore.
Okay, so you'll, you'll bring the conduit to the grassy, if you wish, areas that will make it easier to add the charging stations later?
Yes.
Okay, Jerry, do you want to add something?
Yeah, I'll add that as condition.
Okay, thank, thank, please proceed. Yeah, you can proceed.
I'm, I'm actually finished. Were there any other questions?
No, but I wanted to advise the board, in terms of the variance with respect to the setback from the internal road, I don't think that's necessary, it was indicated by Ms. Galvin, and they've actually reduced the degree of non-conformity, they already had a variance.
Well, we, as MSMO, this was purposes is noted, we want a layout, history of the project.
Sure.
Do you take, Mr. Chairman? Do we take questions over your professional hours? I go to the-
I'd like to hear from all your witnesses and then our professionals will, will, will hear from our professionals. So who do you have up next?
Unless the board has additional questions-
Any additional questions for this?
I'd ask Mr. Farman to come forward. Landscape architecture.
Please mark this.
For the record, indicate by who you're employed in what capacity?
Spiesel Architects, Director of Landscape Architecture.
Okay. What's your educational background and what licenses do you hold in New Jersey and are they current?
Have a BS in landscape architecture from Rutgers and my license is current.
Okay. Have you previously appeared before this?
I have not.
Necessarily on this application?
I have not.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I would offer Mr. Farman is an expert in landscape art.
Any, any issues? So qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one quick question or two. Did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the site landscape plan dated April 5, 2022, last revised June 14, 2022, consisting of six sheets?
I have.
Okay. Can you please describe to the board the elements of the enhanced landscape plan for unit IL?
Will do. Daphne gave a great overview of a lot of the changes as far as the landscape portion of it. Yes.
Let's mark that as A3. And if you could identify what that is.
Okay. It is a landscape plan identified as Bear Creek Independent Living, A2 or A3?
A3.
Do you know what sheet number that would be in our packet?
It doesn't have a sheet number. It's actually a composite rendering because the landscape plan in your sheets are two pages. So the illustration for it to make it easier to see this evening, we combined both as just one landscape plan, one illustration. I don't recall. L1 and L2. Thank you. Quite simply, as Daphne described, as it pertains specifically to the building, the, and Steve will go into a little bit more of the architecture and so forth. But basically, it meant just a slight refinement to the landscape plantings around the building. Nothing was eliminated. The plantings were just adjusted to accommodate the slight adjustments in the building itself. Some additional buffer plantings were added along the perimeter road. And some of the site elements, such as the center courtyard area, the pool which was in the center closer to the building, was relocated a little bit further away to give more of a open area for the residents, a larger courtyard area which is used a lot more than the pool. And then a bocce court was added on the far side of the pool itself. As was mentioned before, there was a reduction in number of tennis courts currently in a lot of senior communities. Tennis is not as popular as pickleball is. So three pickleball, three pickleball courts were added. And then a lot of residents, I say a lot, often residents have a pet, a dog. So an enclosed area for their dogs was added as well. That's basically it. That really, there were no other reduction in plantings. Everything stayed the same. There were some adjustments because of some of the adjustments to the utilities and so forth around there. But basically, it's the, a similar landscape plan as you'd, as you'd seen before.
And that community garden still in there?
I'm sorry.
The community garden in the upper left corner, that's still part of the plan?
That's, it's actually on the other side of the assisted living, the other, the other site.
Oh.
It'll be, it, on the sheet here, it's on the top left-hand corner, just off the, off the page.
Anybody have any?
Will the residents of the independent living have access to the community garden?
They will. Yes.
Anybody? So is everything there available to residents of the hamlet and the, and the assisted living or like the pool and all of that, is that going to be common?
No, no. The, the only amenity available to the hamlet is the cafe.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, our next witness is Steve Cohn. Mr. Cohn, I know who you're employed in what capacity?
I, my firm, Stephen Cohen Architect.
So what's your educational background? What licenses do you hold in state of New Jersey?
I-
Are they currently valid?
Okay. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been licensed for approximately-
Hold it, do it close.
Okay, there we go. I've been a registered architect in the state of New Jersey for a little over 40 years. I have a Bachelor of Architecture from Kent State University. I'm a licensed architect and I have a professional planning license. And my licenses are both current.
And you've prepared up here before this for three days?
Yes, I was the architect of record for the last building in 2000, approved in 2020.
Mr. Chairman, can you please offer, Mr. Cohn is an expert?
Issues? So qualified.
Okay, thank you. All right. Let me just-
So, Mr. Cohn, before I let you take the floor, did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the architectural elevations of floor plans dated April 5, 2022, last revised June 14, 2022, consisting of seven sheets?
Yes.
Okay. And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the assessment of redevelopment practice checklist with four pages?
Yes. Thank you. This take-
Want me to hold this too? Want me to give you testimony for it? Wants you to sit down, I think he said. No, he wants to sit down. Mr. Cohn, are we going to start with the elevations and the floor plans first or? With the elevations because he's got them out.
Whoops.
Better.
Okay, this is our architectural exhibit. Yes. Okay, thank you. Please mark that A4, please.
A4. Is that, Mr. Cohn, is that one sheet or seven sheets?
It's seven sheets.
How many?
Seven.
Seven. This is the Exhibit A4, it's total of seven sheets.
Yep.
And Mr. Cohen, what would you describe as the name of the exhibit? Just the architectural exhibit?
Yes, this is an architectural, architectural floor plans and elevations. This is the revised first floor of the building. Basically, the, the building has been reduced in size. The overall square footage of the building has been reduced by just under 40,000 square feet. The mix of units has been adjusted to more reflect market demands. We've got 81 one-bedroom market units. We've got 51 one-bedroom affordable units. And we've got 88 two-bedroom units. The big change in here is the elimination of the one-bedroom and den and the two-bedroom den. And the unit areas were adjusted to more reflect demand as opposed to, because the two bedrooms in the last go-around were very large. I'll get to that. My coach.
We're sorry. He's ahead of our architect. I'm going to strap him to this.
Please. Okay. One, one notable change in here is in the affordable units. And I did discuss this with- In the affordable units, the affordable units now are the same size as the market-rate one bedroom. So all the one-bedroom units are the same now. And they vary from the mix which was shown on the drawing for the square footage is 809 to 835. It just depends on where they are in the building. And the market, and the affordable units will be distributed throughout the building as opposed to clustering them in one area.
Were they clustered before? I don't remember.
No, they weren't.
They weren't clustered, but-
No, but we didn't show, we didn't show, since all the units are the same, all the one-bedrooms are the same, we didn't show the location of the affordable units.
Now you're showing that they're distributed different places in the building.
Yeah, they'll be distributed throughout the building.
They're not shown on the plan.
They're not shown on the plan.
So I think what he's going to have to do as part of the resolution of approval is he'll have to show that on the plan to the satisfaction of his staff.
Sure. Yes, we will.
Well, he said before that there was-
Over here, if I look at, I want to look. It'll say one bedroom is four, eight bedrooms, and that's another.
They're not shown. They're all listed as one bedroom.
It's on the plan. Yeah, because I was looking at it.
Not. It shows on the plan.
Yeah.
Page 8101.
Yeah, it's in fine print for each room, for each one. Yeah. It's, it's on the plan.
Yeah, well, we're going to, we'll- Affordable and then one bedroom.
We will, we will confirm the locations. I discussed this briefly with Allison Miller and we'll designate all the affordables on the, on the plans.
So is this not the?
We may, they may be adjusted a little bit, but they'll be on the plans.
And you took the studio rooms out, I believe, that you said were in the original plan? Some of the rooms had extra studios?
We have no studios.
The original, the original plan, I think-
The original plan had no studios.
No, not studios. Extra studio bedrooms, dens, dens.
Oh, we had no dens anymore. All the units are, there's straight one bedrooms or two bedrooms.
And the, so the bedrooms are bigger?
Well, the unit sizes vary. Like I said, the, the one bedrooms are 809 to 835 and two bedrooms is 55.
Okay.
The two-bedroom unit sizes are, vary between 1,051 and 1,453. Yes. You're welcome. So that was the, that was the change in the unit mix and the, and the size which resulted in a significantly smaller building. The other change which we made was to eliminate the pitched roof in the building. We did that for two reasons. We did it to, to basically reduce the bulk of the building as well as give us a place to put our, our condensing units. They're on the roof and they're screened. And, and we are making the provision in the building to, for the future installation of solar panels, although we're not doing it right now.
Steve, do you have an elevation drawing of what had been approved?
I'm sorry, yeah, I do.
Steve, before you get to that, just to pin down. So, so the exhibit up there is the same, it's in the plan sheet. And it does show where the affordable unit's going to be. But if I understood you correctly, that might, the locations might be adjusted a little bit.
It might adjust it a little bit, but yeah, but I'll, I'll mark those on the drawings.
Okay. Sorry, when you talk about solar panels, is it, the roof will be solar-ready?
Well, solar, no. I mean, basically, we, the provision in the roof structure will allow for the installation of solar panels.
Mr. Chairman, is, we have a flow in our outline. Is it possible that he goes through his testimony and then at the end we could have the question? Did we just?
Sure.
I think we would flow it.
Sure, no problem.
The three elevation sheets are, sheets A201, 202, and 203.
Are they still part of the one exhibit?
They are part of Exhibit A4.
Okay.
Now, to supplement that, we have color renderings. I'll pick up. Yes. I can put a couple of them.
Exterior images of the building?
Yes.
Do you have five? Over, I don't know. I have them in my outline. It's all being part of a five, five sheets, but you want to mark them separately?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. This is, they're, they're basically, they're similar images, different locations. This is looking to the north. It shows the Assyria, combination of stone, horizontal siding, shingle siding. I have a material board here too.
Can I just stop you for a second? The exterior image is Mr. Lawrence.
I got it.
They'll, they'll be five, and they'll all be 35.
Right.
And then the material board, we would like to mark as Exhibit A6.
That's fine.
Like having a stove in your house? 10% down? I can't. I don't have a rope, law.
I can't accept anything above $100.
What we've done, what we've done is we've got board and batten siding, horizontal siding, and stone in, in, it's a gray, gray and white theme for the building. Some of the, the gray siding, the shingle siding in two colors. So that's, that's the three or the four materials on the outside of the building. And again-
Those, those are the, the actual materials and the actual colors of the building.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, again, subject to material availability and, you know, as we get into the preparation of drawings, there might be some, some slight changes, but this is generally what we're going to do.
Is that all vinyl siding on the side?
This is, this is vinyl, and this is vinyl.
On the other side, there was a stone. Is that real, or is that...
The stone is, is simulated stone.
Simulated stone, but not vinyl.
I'm sorry?
I said simulated stone, but not vinyl, so...
But not vinyl, no, okay. So, again, various other views, to give you a better idea, the, you know, more of the color, the shingle siding, the horizontal siding. One thing we did is we eliminated the roofs on the top-floor balconies to lighten, to lighten the, the, again, to lighten the bulk of the building. We've got a parapet around the entire building, which serves as our screen for the mechanical units, which are clustered in the center of the building.
How high the parapet is?
Excuse me?
How high the parapet is?
It's a minimum of four feet. They vary. It, there are two parapet heights, but the smaller one is slightly, the large one is over four feet, and the, the mechanical units are, I believe, forty-four inches, and they sit, they sit thirty-plus feet back from the facade of the building.
So that wouldn't be a big impediment to solar panels later on, am I right?
Excuse me?
I said that wouldn't be a big impediment to solar panels, because it's just near the edge there.
We, we locate the panels, so, again, the orientation on the roof is not going to be subject to, you know, the, the interference from the parapets. And again, just some other images there, like I said, there, they give you a flavor of what we want to do with the building. We, we think that the change to the flat roof is functional. It's far more attractive than the pitched roof, and it will reduce the overall mass of the building. One thing we've changed, we have changed another. We've changed the, this is the, this is a shot looking towards the front entrance. We've changed the port cachet on the building. It has a flat roof now, also, stone on the columns, and it provides a cover drop-off, and there'll be one on each of the L-shaped buildings.
Can I ask you, what's the intent of all or most of the changes to make this a more residential feel?
Yes.
And what does that mean, more residential?
Well, I mean, we want to, we try to, we want to reduce the scale of the building and the materials themselves. You know, the shingles, the horizontal siding are all, are all residential-type materials as opposed to stucco or drive-it or something like that. And the, and the flat roof becomes functional in this case. Originally, we had condensing units at the base of the building. They're not there anymore.
Steve, you keep alluding to the pitched roof that was before. Do you have the before, the previous approvals?
I can't understand.
Do you have the previous approval, the elevation, showing the pitched roof? On the previous approval? Yes, the previous approval of that pitched roof.
Yeah, the previous approval had a pitched roof.
Drawing of it, that's what I'm asking.
So the building, the building now is, is slightly over ten feet lower than it was before, slightly under ten feet lower than it was before.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
How, with a flat roof, how do you take care of the drainage then of water from the roof?
Internal roof drains. The, the water is collected internally and run down within the building.
But, but are they, are they pitched a little bit so that...
The roof itself is not a dead-level roof. It's got a slight pitch to it.
For, for purposes of drainage.
Quarter inch per foot to allow for drainage. And typically, you put roof drains in five thousand square-foot areas, so every five thousand sque, square feet, there'll be a, an internal leader or downspout in the building.
Do you have anything you should ask to the testimony?
Well, we, we've gone through the memos, and I think we've addressed the, in our letter that we prepared in June, we addressed the comments in Mr. Burgess's memo, and we've, we've, we met with Chief Lynch, and as, as Ms. Galvin said, we, we made adjustments in the plan to accommodate that. And the only other question, I believe, was a memo from Dan Dobremilsky, and the one question, which was point number three, was, I have to read it, but basically, basically the common areas in the building, he was concerned about the, I believe, the use of the common areas, or the functional use of the common areas for the residents. All the common areas in this building are specifically designed for the needs of seniors. As, as you mentioned earlier, we have, we have a yoga room, we have a fitness room, we have a, a video room, we've got, we've got a large gathering space, and we've got some flexible spaces. So as resident desires and needs change, we can use these spaces for other functions.
At the beginning of your testimony, you mentioned that the size of that internal space was increased from plans that were approved in two twenty and the plans that have now...
Yeah, we had roughly ten thousand square feet of common area the first time. Now we have closer, we have fifteen.
Within this is internal?
It's internal, yes.
We've already gone through the X.
Yeah, the, this is all, this is all internal square footage.
So you have nothing further to add?
No.
Do you, do you have any other witnesses?
No, Mr. Mizuka, of course, is always... And we have Craig, Craig and Ryan here.
Okay. Can I just say that, Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Your, this addendum to the Green Development Practices checklist, I really appreciate that you put this kind of thought into environmental sustainability throughout the project, and it's, it's one of the better ones I've ever seen.
I can't, I can't understand.
I was saying something nice.
It was a compliment, just not saying, thank you.
I was, I was thanking you for this addendum, that it shows that you put a lot of thought into sustainability and, and for the project, and even into problems people could have putting things together where it doesn't work out in the end, so I just appreciate it, so, thank you.
Tell, tell this guy that, right there. Rob, do you have something?
Yes, Steve, I, Steve, here. I couldn't hear a word you were saying the whole night either, so it's not you, I think. Angela, you must be a little too close to the mic.
Usually too far.
Very distorted down here. Just a couple of questions, if I may. What is a wellness room? I like the set, the sound, but what does it actually mean?
It's, it's for health counseling.
Speak into the mic, please. Mike, Mike, speaking to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
It's for health counseling. We don't have, there's no, we don't have doctors in the building, there's no medical care in the building, but, you know, again, nutritional discussions and things like that.
And Steve, this may not be applicable to this particular application, but I'm just kind of curious, and I'm learning as well. Given the advent of COVID, how has it impacted your design for facilities like this? Whether...
I guess it has more to do with ventilation...
Yeah.
...than anything else, and, and that'll be reflected in, in air filters, air filtration in the building. Again, now you get into these MERV, MERV eight filters, which are very thick air filters on common mechanical equipment, so that's really the, the major change in the...
Deliveries for, for some of the patrons and tenants, deliveries of food and things like that, which is, you know, this is a very new concept now, the last two or three years. The buildings, are buildings designed with the, with that in, in mind, or you're not seeing that as yet?
No, what, you know, one, well, one thing we, which is minor, which we did before COVID, you know, we've got package rooms, so you don't get delivery people necessarily coming into the building. We've got a, a package room at the rear of the building on each of the two sides where UPS, FedEx can bring the parcel in and put it in a room, and then the resident can go pick it up.
Okay.
And so, you know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to, to minimize the outside intrusion into the building.
The design is beautiful, by the way.
Thank you very much.
People, people speak to what they like. I like that.
Thank you.
You guys sell your first unit already, right there.
I didn't want to say it, but possible.
Anybody? Anybody else have questions to do with this? Okay, that's it for your testimony, for your...
Yeah, I'm obviously available to any questions there.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
You're welcome.
I like what you're doing with the Mets, by the way. Let's hear from our professionals.
If one of the professionals could stand and raise your right hand, I'll swear all in at once. Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth? So I sworn or affirm, if you could state your full names, starting with Joe.
John?
John Taylor.
Thank you. Joe, we'll start with you. Can you speak into the mic, Joe, please? Thank you.
Do I have to repeat all of that? Too complimentary of the applicant. Now, what I was saying was that it was gratifying to see how they responded so well that all the comments that David had offered in his reports. They provided a lot of information on the drawings. In addition to that, where they didn't, they addressed the points that he raised in testimony. So I really don't have that many questions. I do have two. One regarding, an issue he had raised regarding ADA accessibility, and if someone could just affirm or confirm that with all these changes that are being made, the every, the building, the parking areas, the sidewalks and whatnot, still retain ADA consistency.
We can't hear you. So there's a microphone right here.
The, the building, the, the building itself will be totally ADA compliant, all the units. New Jersey is a little different in, from other states. Everything needs to be adaptable in all the units, and so everything will be, will be ADA compliant, and will, will comply with the New Jersey UCC Uniform Construction Code.
And the exterior, the sidewalks, the accessible, accessible parking spaces, all that will meet the ADA guidelines.
It seemed to be so whenever something hit the plan, but it was good to get that confirmation. And for Craig, because I hate to see the planner not have anything to say, and he has to justify his time being here. Just could you confirm that the fifty-one affordable units are consistent with the COA regulations, and the fifty-one units does not represent any change at all in terms of the COA regulations from what was previously approved?
Do we need to qualify?
Yeah.
Okay. He was sworn in, but not qualified.
I was sworn, I wasn't qualified. I'll do the two-sentence version. I've been in the field for forty years, licensed in New Jersey for twenty-seven licenses currently valid, qualified in over a hundred hearings and trials, and regularly appear before planning its own. I'm not competing with him, he's got more than I did. Yes, I ha, I have.
So qualified, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Joe, in terms of your question, the last hook was the important part. As modified through this municipality's compliance plan, this is consistent with the prior approval. The fifty-one units will be consistent with UHAC, but as to bedroom ratios with seniors, it's always following a slightly different rule.
And, and John, just so the board understands, in terms of the number of bedrooms, for the, all I have to do is be one-bedroom units for the affordable units, yes.
Finally, in terms of any direct testimony that I could offer, I think it's important to note that the design really represents a number of substantive improvements in contrast to the prior approval. In terms of building an impervious coverage, there's reductions in terms of setbacks to the road, to the external roads, there's actually increased setbacks in contrast to what was previously approved. And in terms of the roof line, I do agree with Mr. Cohen that it lowers the building height, it will lower the look of the mass of the building as well. So from an aesthetic and visual enhancement perspective, I think they've achieved what they've tried to set out to do.
Any questions for Joe? Okay, John, you're up.
Okay, so Francis has provided a memo to the board, dated June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. In it, we acknowledge that the major site part of this is the removal of stormwater management recharger, area number five. They've decreased, substantially decreased the, the footprint of the building, and that's allowed them with some other adjustments to, to change their stormwater management design, to remove that. We've looked through the calculations, and we accept their calculations as appropriate. The only condition we come to the board with is a recommendation that anything that has not been completed for resolution compliance from the previous approval be a condition of this board's approval if you choose to approve this application.
Okay, and noted that the applicant attorney is shaking his head, yes.
Yes.
And I think the major open, open issue, major work to be done is just completing the manual.
The stormwater management manual.
Yeah, operation.
Yeah. And revised site plans to be submitted, including these elements electronically after, after they're complete.
Yes.
After resolution compliance is complete.
Yes.
Jerry, you have that?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
That's all.
That's it. Okay, any questions for John, anybody? Okay, moving right along, Dan.
Thank you.
You're up.
Good evening. So the, I think the applicant's testimony went through my report pretty thoroughly. I think there, I have no comments or recommendations or concerns with the modified landscape design. I think I made some comments about the change in the roof design, saying that the elimination of the ground-level HVAC units eliminates a potential nuisance, nuisance concern with the noise relative to the units, and creates the possibility of having solar panels on the roof, and I think that benefit outweighs the detriment of the changes, especially when you consider that there's a pretty extensive buffer around the perimeter of this site. So from the main public road, you really don't even know there's something in there unless you're looking for it. So I don't think any, if anybody perceives the flat roof to be something less than the pitched roof, I don't think it's really much of a public concern, because you won't really see it unless you're in on the site. But, so, otherwise, I think it, it all makes sense.
Just a quick question on whether the roof is solar-ready. I understood that to mean simply that it's constructed so that solar panels could be placed on the roof. Is there more to it? But Mr. Cohen seemed to, or maybe it was Mr. Petrino, seemed to have some concerns about that.
I think the other step would be to add some type of internal PVC so that the, the electric could be run through the building. My guess is they probably would do that anyway. So, so essentially, I think it will be solar-ready.
Okay. Any questions?
Mike, I have just one question, and I don't know if Dan can answer it or not. On Exhibit A one, they show a generator...
Yes.
On the right side, and the generator on the left side there. That generator appears to be pretty close to the building. Is that far enough to minimize any noise and problems for those residents at that point of the building?
Well, it's, I mean, the, the generator isn't run continuously or regularly, it's only in times of emergency, and then it's exercised occasionally. And then it's exercised occasionally. Depending upon the size of it, it's even regulated as to when it could be exercised relative to the air quality. So I don't think it creates.
You don't think it'll cause any problems?
I don't know. I mean, if it's necessary, everybody's going to tolerate it because you need it to get electric. Otherwise, it's just going to be there silently.
Okay, thank you.
Are those standby emergency generators? Okay, so they'll just run on a weekly? Is it weekly that they run testing? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question on Chief Lynch's report.
Sure.
At the last comment, he says the applicant will be required by the construction official to conduct a radio signal strength survey of the building. I think that should also include with review by the fire officials. I don't think a construction official.
There's a fire inspection required part of the construction.
So there will be a fire official?
Yeah, yeah.
It says required by the construction.
Yeah, but the construction is building, electric, plumbing, fire.
Yeah, that's, he's just saying that he doesn't, I think the code officials are the ones that do the tests and are supervised.
Okay, I didn't know if that needed to be inserted in there at all.
That's what.
But that's adequate.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Questions for either applicant or professional? So at this time, I'll open it up for the public comments on this application. Please come to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Allison Miller, M.I.L.L.E.R., 41 Windsor Drive. This application in this form was not given to the Affordable Housing Committee. I do have just a couple of comments. I read the application online, which is why I didn't know where the affordable units were cited because it was impossible to read online. This is nobody's fault. But I talked to Mr. Cohen, who reassured me that they would be scattered throughout. I'm really happy with what he said. I'm happy with the affordable units looking just like the market rate units. I think they're doing a great job with it. And I'm very happy with the fact that people from the hamlet can come and get breakfast or lunch. I understand that making that available to them 24/7 causes some security problems. But I think the board would like to know what hours the people from outside, that is, the hamlet, can access the breakfast and lunch. I don't know whether they'll tell you now or later, but it's something that should be nailed down. But it seems to me they've done, from an affordable housing point of view, it seems to me they've done a good job with this revision. And I'm glad to see it.
Thank you. Gavin, answer regarding hours on the cafe?
We will provide hours of operation. I mean, something like seven to two. But during resolution compliance, we'll make that part of, part of a note to a plan. However, however staff wants to handle it.
Okay. Okay with that? That answers your question, right? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody, any other members of the public have any comments regarding this application? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion. And the motion is to accept the amended.
No, no.
Closing the public hearing, sorry. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, thank you. Deliberations, any discussion? Any comments by anybody?
Only one thing I noticed, that all the affordable units are not exactly same for one-bedroom units. There are some of them same, but most of them are not.
What do you mean by not same?
What I mean by that, when they say all are same, they are not same.
You mean, oh, they're not the same as the market rate?
Market units.
They're saying that they are.
They are not. They're looking at the plan, I can see that.
They're all one-bedroom.
You're saying they're different sizes of one-bedroom?
Yes.
They're all, they're all one-bedroom units. And the one-bedroom units vary in size from 809 to 835 square feet.
And that's.
Let me, okay. Are the affordable units, all the one-bedrooms are 800 to 900 square feet, correct?
809 to 835.
Okay, so varying sizes. Are all the affordable units the same exact size and all the market rates are exactly the same size? Or they could be different?
Market rate and the affordables all vary between 809 and 835.
Did that answer? Yeah. So they're not only exactly the same, but they're all one-bedroom? And I guess how they fit them into the buildings, they, some are a little less in square feet, some are a little more.
Okay, you're okay with that?
And they did say they were going to adjust where these are because it does look like there's a number of, the affordable seem to be in one column and the one-bedroom seems to be in a different column here right now. So.
Compliance will note it all on the drawings.
So you will be adjusting these drawings to mix things up more?
It's like they don't have to be, but we'll designate where they're going to be. I mean, the unit layout's the same, so.
Yeah, so I mean, they're all the same size, so they could be scattered.
So you'll take a random number generator, whatever you need to do and make, mix them up.
Any other? Anybody have any other questions or debate about anything? Alan, anything? Anis, anything else? Curtis?
No.
Anybody?
I guess I want to ask, there are conditions, right?
Yep.
Are there any waivers that you requested?
There's no design or submission waivers. Frank, that's correct.
Is that correct, Joe?
None that hadn't been previously ran.
None amended, there might have been something previous.
There was one that I think they accepted because it was there before.
Right. And I think the only, it was the setback that increased the size and that was approved and they improved on that. Rob, anybody? Sue, Mayor, anybody? Okay. We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Oh, Andrea, a motion to adopt and mean approve.
Sorry, approve them. These stuff.
Second.
Second by Sue. Sue, please call the roll.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to go through the conditions.
Sure, Jerry.
Okay. There aren't that many. The applicant who submitted a plan in resolution compliance that shows what conduit will be put in. Okay. The the applicant will submit a plan in resolution compliance that shows what conduit will be put in with respect to electrical vehicles, charging stations, that's subject to staff approval. The applicant will confirm on the plans the location of the affordable units. They'll be distributed throughout the building. There might be some slight adjustments to what's on sheets 1.01, 1.02, and 03. And that would be subject to staff approval. The affordable units be consistent with UHAC. The roof will be solar ready. During resolution compliance, the applicant will provide hours of operation for the cafe and will document that with a note on the plans or however else the applicant, the staff wants documentation. Any conditions of prior approval that have not been satisfied during resolution compliance must be satisfied. Submission of revised plans electronically. And then the four bullets in the memo by Chief Lynch dated July 8, 2022. And I could go over them, but we went over the earlier. And that's it.
Thank you, Jerry. So we have a motion by Andrea to approve the application with conditions outlined by a planning board attorney, seconded by Sue. Please call the vote.
Mr. Lovera?
Yes.
Ms. Bari?
Yes.
Mr. Shikhtel?
Yes.
Mr. Beg?
Yes.
Ms. Applegate?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandell?
Yes.
Mayor Murate?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoberman?
Yes.
Chairman Court?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
I just want to note for the record that the jinx has been broken because I sometimes tell my wife before I leave for a meeting that I think it's going to be a short one. And that that always means it goes to midnight. But this actually, this actually happened.
I'm going to open the meeting up to public, but I just want to give the applicant a few minutes to clear out. So just bear with me.
Listen to Sam.
Okay. Any member of the public wish to make any comments on non-agenda, non-pending applications? Please step up to the mic, give your name, give your address. And there's a three-minute limit on each person and a 15-minute limit total on public comments. Please step up, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Church, 11 Princeton Place. I wanted to briefly discuss some aspects of the Mercer County Planning Board.
Speaking to the mic. Speaking to the mic.
Sorry, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to mention some aspects of the Mercer County Planning Board. It's going to be the subject that is going to come up many, many times for various reasons here. I'm not sure that everyone knows how the county planning board works. They have a committee called the Land Development Committee that's very much like our technical review committee. And when an application comes to the county planning board, it has to go through the Land Development Committee. And they do a very thorough job. I've attended several of the meetings online. And they normally supply a lot of, or insist on a number of conditions that have to be achieved or done by the applicant before the application can actually come for full approval to the county planning board. Now, at the June 15 meeting, I presented some aspects of an environmental situation regarding the Avalon Bay application. Excuse me. And I distributed a report, which was marked as an official exhibit to that, to that application. And in that report, I mentioned that this application had not yet been fully approved by the Mercer County Planning Board. And that, in fact, is the case. It has not yet been fully approved. The Land Development Committee has issued a very long report on this, which I obtained by an Oprah request, that all these conditions that have to be satisfied by Avalon Bay before it can go to the full county planning board for approval. And Jerry, I don't know if you have a copy of this. May I give you a copy? Okay, thank you. It's a very extensive list of conditions that have to be carried out by the applicant before it can go for a full vote to the planning board. And that has not happened yet. I know that for sure because there's no notice of it on the Mercer County website. And also, one of the conditions is that there has to be a developer's agreement presented to the county planning board for approval and then come back here to town council for approval. And that hasn't happened. If it had happened, I would know about it because it would be on an agenda for town council. So the applicant has not yet fulfilled all the conditions that are required to be fulfilled by the Land Development Committee. Now, after I had talked about this at that meeting, I had to sit down and then Mr. Hoff, the attorney for Avalon Bay, was asked by the chairman if it had been approved by the outside agencies. And Mr. Hoff, who is not here unfortunately, said that it had been approved. And what I'm saying now is that I respectfully submit that that is not the case. It has not yet been fully approved by the Mercer County Planning Board. And I think it may still be under consideration by the Canal Commission. I put in a request today to the Secretary of the Canal Commission for more information on that. She hasn't gotten back to me yet. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that this still has to go to the full planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There. Stacy Fox, 29 Marion Avenue. A couple of things, I'd like to ask you a question. What does a resident have to do to get a Zoom link for these meetings? There's a lot of people that I know wanted to be here. Some are out because of COVID, some are out because of family reasons, some are out of state. So, so far, we haven't had one. And I know that we have the technology because town council does it all the time and it's very convenient. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the meeting and participate on Monday. And that was very valuable to me and I was grateful. But I want to know why we can't do it, or more so, I want to know what do we have to do to get to yes? What do we have to do to get a Zoom link and participation remotely for this?
This was discussed with the attorney and there's no, we checked with the League of Municipalities as well. There is no planning board or zoning board in the entire New Jersey that is both in person or Zoom. See, they're in person or Zoom. Anybody who wants to watch the meeting, you cannot participate on Zoom. Anybody can watch the meeting, we are taping the meeting. We are taping every meeting and usually very next day, at most 48 hours, it's posted on the planning board website. So anybody who wants to watch the meeting can watch the meeting. They cannot participate remotely on legal advice.
That's disappointing. The other thing is, the other day, I got something in the mail. I recently became a nonprofit, as you all are aware, to take donations for the fight against Bridge Point 8. And Mercer County welcomed my new business to the county. And what they sent me was extraordinarily disconcerting. It's a picture of shipping containers. And then on the inside, it's pictures of warehouse, everything's warehouse here. And a message from Brian Hughes, the second sentence, is from our retail destinations to our warehouse and manufacturing facilities, Mercer County is open for business. Now, I thought, I grew up in the Garden State. This does not at all reflect what I thought the county's vision or the vision of the township is going to be for where I live. I've already relocated once to get away from this. And I guess nobody at home would even know unless they open a business and then go register their name. And then they get this in the mail. And what this is, is it's an incentivization for people to do business internationally using warehouses. And it's duties reduction, duty elimination, duty deferral. So there's all these duty-free breaks for people who get into this business. And so I'm a nonprofit anti-warehouse and somehow they saw fit to send this to me. Furthermore, I just learned that it's also long outdated. So I hope that not just the names here of the freeholders are outdated. I'm hoping that the incentives and the vision for the county being industrial, I hope that too is outdated. And last, if the Bridge Point 8 application makes its way back to you folks, I hope that you've seen enough and heard enough from the public and continue to read and learn more and more about it. That you come to the conclusion that there's no reason for you to do anything further to support it. And to the contrary, you should do everything in your power to stop it. And to the contrary, you should do everything in your power to stop it. And no amount of residential could be as scary as what comes with diesel trucks. Residential is far more palatable than warehouses and diesel trucks. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to make any comments? Hearing done, meeting adjourned. Thank you.